Commissioner Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Capcor.
Here.
Mr. Scissor.
Here.
Mr. Piner.
Present.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the acting community development director, do we have any agenda modifications, postponements for arrangements of any kind? You know, we should take action on the minutes. Okay. So, everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Do you have any notes on the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes of November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Let's have a vote.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray.
Aye.
Commissioner Capcor.
Aye.
Mr. Scissor.
Aye.
Mr. Piner.
Aye. Thank you. So, in terms of communications, we do have an email for item four that was provided to staff just earlier this evening. They provided a copy with. Thank you. Okay. I believe, still waiting for my gentle load, so I'm doing this from memory here. I believe this is the point in the meeting where members of the public may address the commission on items not on the agenda. You may speak for five minutes, but the commission may not take any action on comments with that hearing. Does anyone want to speak on an item not on the agenda? Anyone online? So, I'll close the public hearing. Just two, two on the agenda, which is PLN twenty twenty three dash one fifty five overlay districts. I believe staff would like us to postpone that because the presentation is not yet ready.
Correct, so the recommendation is to open the public hearing and then make a motion to continue consideration to the meeting of January twenty third, two thousand twenty four.
Public hearing open. Okay. I guess that was the staff presentation, that all public hearing. Does anyone want to speak on the issue? Does anyone online want to speak on the issue? Do you even like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this item, continue this item until the beginning of January twenty third, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
And please have a vote.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray.
Aye.
Commissioner Capcor.
Aye.
Mr. Scissor.
Aye.
Mr. Piner.
Aye. Okay, not closing public hearing. Very efficient. Let's move on to item three, PLN twenty twenty three dash one seventy three, six fifty three, East Campbell Avenue, Suite Two, conditional use permit for a medical chiropractor office. Finally, thank you. Sorry, it's a large packet today. This is a public hearing to consider the request of Adam Schofield on behalf of Graylands Professional Office Center LLC to establish chiropractic office medical services clinic within an existing tenant space in the Graylands Professional Office Center, a property located at six fifty three East Campbell Avenue, Suite Two. The application under consideration includes a conditional use permit filed under PLN twenty twenty three dash one seventy three. And the planner is it's, or is it, uh, would you like to give the presentation?
Thank you so much, Chair. The item I've brought for you tonight is a conditional use permit to establish a chiropractic office within an existing tenant space in the Graylands Professional Office Center on properties located at six fifty three East Campbell Avenue. Uh, this will be in Suite Two. The proposed project is located within the PD zoning district with a central business mixed-use general plan land use designation. Here, the land use designation dictates the allowable uses and development standards. The property is developed with a single-story commercial building with five existing tenant spaces primarily comprised of personal services and professional offices. The site is within the East Campbell Avenue master plan and it is surrounded by a mix of general commercial uses predominantly occupied by professional offices and personal services. The primary scope of the proposal is to establish a an office that provides chiropractic treatment as defined by state law. The classification of this use is consistent with the zoning code's definition of medical use clinic, which applies to any use that allows medical procedures to be performed by licensed medical professional. In this case, the proposed procedures will be performed by a licensed chiropractor. As indicated on the plans, there are no proposed changes to the interior or exterior at this time. In the central business mixed-use zoning districts land use table for master plan areas, medical services clinics are listed as a conditional use to be approved by the planning commission. This allows the city to impose operational requirements as conditions of approval to ensure that the implementation does not result in negative impacts to the surrounding areas. As further described in the staff report, the proposal is consistent with both the general plan and the East Avenue Campbell, the East Campbell Avenue master plan, which governs this project site. Specifically, the central business mixed-use designation supports a pedestrian-friendly environment for shopping, services, and entertainment. It's well-suited for a ground-floor chiropractic office, which would complement the residential spaces on upper floors in the future. This aligns with the East Camp, East Campbell Avenue master plan's guidelines requiring storefront windows and commercial visibility. It also offers flexibility for adaptive use, matching the area's vision. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to approve conditional use permit PLN twenty twenty three, one seventy three. Uh, this concludes my presentation and I can now take questions at this time.
Okay, do you have questions for staff? Let's start on the side.
Yeah, uh, just one thing, unless we're, because we just went through that exercise where we were proposing some changes to stuff like this, would this be an item that was among those that we were proposing for a quicker, easier approval?
Yeah, so, um, this study session to review and provide feedback on recommendations from the planning commission's ad hoc economic development subcommittee, which I believe you're referring to.
Yes.
Uh, would propose changes that would change the application procedure for this type of project. Instead of a conditional use permit, we would process this as an administrative.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
No question. Present. Questions?
Yep, moment of silence.
It was the moment of silence. Yeah, um, Mr. Gray has another question I had, thank you very much. Uh, I think at this point, we can open up the public hearing. The applicant like to speak, is the applicant here? Come on, come on, please introduce yourself.
For the record, uh, I'm Adam Schofield, thank you for hearing me out tonight. Just a chiropractor for six years, trying to let strike out on my own, I've been working with it as an associate in another office. Learned everything I have to learn there and I'm ready to start my business and I'm happy to contribute to the community and to create a space that'll help people kind of understand how to live more healthy and pain-free and vibrant lives. So, that's my plan to kind of contribute to the community, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, just want to say welcome and wish you success.
Thank you very much.
Have you ever been practicing in the area?
I think technically it's San Jose, but it's just up Winchester, right across the street from the South Winchester barbecue.
I don't know where the barbecue is.
Yeah, it's right across the street from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
If you guys ever need a chiropractor. Is, um, would anyone else like to speak on the item? Anyone online? Okay, close the public hearing. Uh, discussion, start over on this side.
This is the kind of thing I want to streamline. Excited that you're coming to our town, feels like we could do this with a lower barrier of entry, given how minimal the changes are internally, externally. Thank you for putting the report together, being very thorough about our current process, but I'm excited for us to approve this and then streamline it for other future businesses.
Commissioner Gray.
Well, you know, we always appreciate when a professional moves in and, you know, helps with the health and viability of our citizens, so, welcome.
Welcome to Campbell. Uh, I just like to say it's always been kind of awkward to review these because I'm never quite sure what I'm supposed to be looking for and it's kind of nice to know that, uh, the rest of the commission, the rest of the city kind of feels the same, so thank you for going through the process, uh, hopefully you'll be one of the last people to go through the longer process. Um, I have no objections, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Campbell Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to establish a chiropractic office, medical services, comma clinic, within an existing tenant space in the Graylands Professional Office Center, a property located at six fifty three East Campbell Avenue, Suite Two, in the PD Plan Development Zoning District, and finding the product category exempt under section fifteen, three oh one of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second. And please have a vote.
Commissioner Fields.
Aye.
Commissioner Gray. Aye.
Commissioner Capcor.
Aye.
Mr. Scissor.
Aye.
Mr. Piner.
Aye.
That passes five zero two, congratulations. And that brings us to item four, uh, it's PLN twenty twenty three dash sixty. Read that, it's public hearing, you can see the application by Valley Home Builders, Natalie Alletio? Alletio, Alletio, sorry. To allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new approximately three thousand six hundred fifty square foot two-story single-family residence on property located at thirteen twenty Burrows Road, the R one six single-family residential zoning district. And the project planner for this, this is not the agenda, is Chrissy Tam, would you like to present?
Thank you, Chair. So, the project before you tonight is located at thirteen twenty Burrows Road, it's in the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan. It's generally at the northeast corner of Burrows Road and Steinway Avenue, just as indicated by the image there. Um, it is zoned R one ten for single-family residential and is located in a low-density residential general plan land use designation. The applicant proposal includes the demolition of an existing single-story, single-family house and the construction of a new approximately three thousand six hundred and fifty square foot two-story, single-family house, uh, the images are shown on the screen there. And the project is subject to the development standards of the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan, uh, which are shown on the slide here. To summarize in the complies column, the project is complying with the maximum height, FAR lot coverage, and setbacks associated with the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan. One thing of note, um, the project in front of you tonight is not an SB nine project, but rather the state had clarified through passing of SB nine that one to two residential units need to be approved ministerially. Um, and so, as you know, SB nine does allow for the approval up to four units to be developed on a traditionally single-family, uh, lot. Uh, but the proposal in front of you is just for a new single-family house, so therefore it's not SB nine project. Now, the ministerial approval associated with one residential unit such as this project, uh, it cannot involve any kind of personal judgments. The project is held to objective standards, uh, which are generally thought of the standards, uh, on the previous slide, FAR heights, setbacks. Um, it, the clarification that the state had does limit the ability for project alterations through this process. Um, and the planning commission unfortunately cannot deny a project if it does comply with objective standards. Now, we do recognize this is sort of a nuance of the current code and we're presently actively working on a code update to address the, to correct the code to comply with state law in this regard.
Okay, just, uh, a clarification question, so I guess, are you saying that under state law, like, this shouldn't go through a planning commission hearing, but it's just that our rules currently do that? Okay.
That's correct. Staff did receive one public inquiry on the project and the nature of the concern was related to privacy impacts associated with the second story. Primarily, the second story facing the northern property line. Um, even though the applicant, now I should note that Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan does contain standards that discuss privacy impacts and ways to reduce said privacy impacts. Unfortunately, the way that they are written are subjective and therefore the project cannot be held as the project needs to be considered ministerially and only objective standards can apply to the project. The subjective privacy impact policies contained within the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan cannot be held. However, the applicant has revised the proposal throughout the project review to, as a, as a good faith effort to address those privacy concerns. And so, they did reduce the size of the windows on the second floor facing the northern property line. They did incorporate like a frosted obscured bottom pane to the windows and, and they did remove a second story window that was originally for the closet. Uh, but they removed the window, incorporated a skylight instead. Um, now, as Daniel mentioned earlier, um, there is an email that was provided to the commission tonight. Staff did receive the subsequent email from, um, the, the public requesting that the top window plane, panes on the second story along, second story windows along the northern property line also be made obscure and frosted. Now, I do want to reiterate that the commission is pretty limited in what we can impose at this point. As it is not considered an objective standard, we're rather a subjective one. Uh, and with that, staff recommends the planning commission to adopt a resolution to allow for the demolition of the existing house and the construction of the new two-story house and finding the project exempt under CEQA. So, that concludes staff's presentation, here for any questions.
Uh, start over here.
Uh, I, I covered this SARC meeting and all my questions were answered in there, it was mostly about the sort of dimensions between this property and the other one that's also all in the packet, so I don't have any other questions.
So, I'll ask you Tracy, although the applicant is more appropriate, I understand you had it completely voluntary to make the changes to the windows and they already made a bunch of changes in a good faith effort, as you mentioned. Do you know if the applicant is amenable to this other change that their neighbor was requesting?
Uh, that I don't know, unfortunately, the email did come in quite late and I was doing.
I just wonder, okay, we'll, we'll ask, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so, um, my question is, uh, and it's probably, applicant's probably a better person to ask, but do you know if their original proposal was for the second floor to be a little bit larger? Because when I look at the proposal, it looks like the wedding cake where the upper layer is smaller than the lower layer, you know, and you know, I mean, I personally don't like it, I, you know, being an engineer, I like the, you know, columns on the walls to line up, so you, you know, have a stronger house, so my, so that's something that, you know, other staff, did, did, did our requirements force her to do that?
Just pulling up the initial proposal, so the initial proposal, uh, actually did not comply with setback requirements, which is an objective standard, so they did have to, it was only, I believe, a five-foot setback, um, and now
What door floor?
Right, right, for the lower floor, um, and now they incorporated a larger setback to comply with the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan. I do see that the second floor of the first submittal was set back from the first floor to start.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I just have a question, just kind of from my own edification, because it looks like it, it meets all the objective standards and, and, and it even meets Santa Moss standards that this required. But I was just curious, because you know, the way the, the lot is configured on the corner and its, its address is on Burrows, whether or not the applicant, do you know whether the applicant had, and then, and then the way the house is configured, if, if you don't look hard at the plans, it looks like it's on Steinway. You know, the front, you know, the front, you know, it's like the frontage at Steinway, because that's it, it's, it's, I was wondering if, if you know if, if the applicant had considered, you know, changing, going through, I'm sure it's probably a difficult process to get a change for Burrows to Steinway, but whether or not they considered that so that they could have their, the, the house to fit, to look like, you know, like it's a Steinway, Steinway entrance.
Right, so our building division, uh, does handle addressing, um, the way that it is currently laid out, I believe it will have a Steinway address, but for our planning purposes, we do consider Burrows, the front property line, based on the definition of what our front property line is. Generally, when it's a corner lot, it's the shorter width of the two lines. And so, there is, um, a door on the a, I don't want to call it a front door, but I guess an exterior door on the borough side as well. But for the purposes of addressing, our building division will likely look at the property and assign a Steinway address.
Oh, really? Okay, so, turned out to be a good question. Okay, yeah, because I could see that they kind of put an entrance, what looks like a front entrance on Burrows, but it's, it, it, to me, the house looks like it should be a Steinway house, so, thanks for the information.
My only question was, um, so, tell me if I understand this correctly. Given that the request that we have here is not, does not connect to any objective standard, we cannot condition approval on, okay, so, this is a request, they're asking nicely, we can ask nicely, but there's no conditioning of this, this is, this should be an entire, that's what ministerial needs here.
Correct, yeah, by conditioning the project, you are exercising special judgment, which is not permissible.
Okay, all right. That was my question, so with that, I'll have a comment, the applicant like to speak, I am so sorry for getting your name wrong. Please come up and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Natalie, I'm the architectural designer. Uh, I've been working with Femi for the last year, just working on the design and the planning submittal. She's currently living by herself in Santa Cruz Mountains, so she wants to move closer to the land, she's been moving with her daughter, her granddaughter. We wanted the exterior to look nice, but respectful to the neighborhood. The emphasis of the design is really to create large spaces for her whole family together. I did receive your email, sorry, I just was talking to Femi about it, and we'd like to push back if possible, respectfully. Uh, one of the other changes we made in the last revision was we raised the window header height on the second floor to eighteen from six foot eight. And so, the top of the bottom pane is five foot eight. And so, with the distance away from the structures and just the height in general, I just don't think it's a huge privacy concern, but, yeah, not exactly sure. Thank you.
Okay, are there questions for the applicant?
Uh, just so I understand it, as it relates just to the email, are you saying basically the window is so high that most people's heads are below, like?
Below, and as like a six-foot person, it would still be like above your eyes, so.
Got it. Uh, was there any other contact with the owner, I think when this was in front of SARC, I'd asked if the
I don't believe so, um, I think she's still moving, so she hasn't, uh, been living there full-time, but, yeah. They should get together.
And could you just remind us of the other changes you had made in service of privacy, like you sort of moved?
Um, like Tracy said, we, uh, we eliminated a window in the master closet and we replaced it with the skylight. Um, I believe one other window in the bathroom on that side was, uh, reduced in size. And then, um, we changed the header height and made the bottom pane of all of those windows along that side frosted.
And just for the sake of asking, like, the reluctance to make this one frosted is?
The whole window?
Yeah.
Um, I guess personally, I want to, oh, go for it, Femi.
To, to bring more light into the rooms. So that it's not so dark in there because of the frosting.
Maybe just to see the sky.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood, great, those are my questions, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have questions. You don't own step ladders, right? Just kidding.
Femi and her daughter are shorter than me.
So, yeah, I know. I think I actually, within your right, you know, and I, and when I used to build homes, you know, that's that's perfect. You know, the bottom portion is frosted, the top, so you can get the more light and be able to see how it makes perfect sense. As far as skylights, you know, skylights and those things that come through the like closets, careful of the UV light, they actually turn the color of the, you know, clothes on. So my question is regarding the design of the house. So upper floor being a little smaller, did you do that because that's what they wanted? Or did you do that because of our regulation that said, you know, higher setback on upper floor?
A little bit of both. The stamp, one of the design guidelines was minimizing the use of design features that accentuate the size of new houses, so they don't appear significantly larger. And it kind of talks about not having these vertical emphasized stories, so two height walls. Also, which is kind of worked out like that with the design, a lot more common areas. Femi wants her master bedroom suite downstairs while there's only a few bedrooms upstairs.
Okay, and then the other question was, are you okay with the, you know, with the address change, you know, because sometimes if you live there for some time and change the address, it's pretty inconvenient.
That is definitely a Femi question. I don't know if she's still there. I'm just the designer. I don't live there. They actually really liked the Steinway side. That's why they wanted we change the design of the driveway to enter that way, just because it's less busy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. I guess the question is like, you are like aware that we cannot tell you to do that, to frost the upper half of the windows? Okay, just want to make sure that was, everything was clear here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else would like to comment on this? Okay, without close call hearing? About discussion?
I feel like the applicant took appropriate sort of consideration for something they weren't required to do for the privacy concerns and that was all in good faith and I appreciate that. And I buy the rationale of why frosting this window may not be necessary, given the height. So I am supportive of this item.
Yeah, I would just say the same thing. I think it was a good faith effort and stuff they didn't have to do. I would just say camp car. So, and I, and I, I know what Commissioner Camp Car says from those renderings, the second story did kind of have a little bit of a wedding cake type of look. I personally though, generally speaking, I I really like the second story setbacks. I think it really really makes the bulk of it. It's a big, you know, it's a, it's a pretty huge house, really. And with the setbacks on the second story, though, I think that really will make it fit in a lot better with Campbell. So you know, depending on how it comes out, I think I, you know, I do kind of like the setbacks on the second story, but I am in favor of the project and, you know, there's anyway, but I favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also in support of the project. You know, looking at the second story versus first story, I mean, we're talking, I can understand if there's a little setback here. It seems like, you know, it's like one third of the upper story. I could be wrong, you know, in my estimation, but but anyway, it's still a beautiful house and, you know, I think it's a great design. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just reinforce the other commissioners' take on it. Sounds like, you know, raising the windows, it's a good solution. I wouldn't be able to look out the window. So, so at five nine, I just could be. So, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a good solution and I'm sure it will probably ultimately satisfy the neighbors' concerns. So good luck with it and and it's a, it's a lovely design.
As me, I like to say I'm just overjoyed not to be litigating subjective questions of should we frost this window or not? Never one of the parts of this position that I liked. I did have one follow-up question for staff. Roughly, when would that code update come before us?
I'm hoping quarter one next year. So one small part of a much bigger update.
Thank you for all your work. Okay, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I happy to move that the Campbell Planning Commission adopted a resolution approving a site and architectural review permit PLN 2023-60 to allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new approximately thirty-six hundred and fifty square foot two-story, single-family residence, finding the project at thirteen twenty Burrows Road for now, defining the project category exempt under section fifteen three oh three of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Do you have a second?
I'll say. Commissioner Fields?
I.
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 Questions, sir?
I.
I. Congratulations. Thank you. Brings us to item five. Read that to the record. This is a public hearing to consider the request of Sachneel Tal, if I pronounced that correctly, on behalf of forty-four Sunnyside LLC to allow construction of a six lot detached, same family residential subdivision and related removal of onsite protected trees on property located at forty-four and fifty-six Sunnyside Avenue. The applications under consideration include a planned development permit, tentative subdivision map and tree removal permit submitted under an SB three thirty preliminary application filed in compliance with government code section six five nine four one dot one filed under PLN twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-five. And the planner, according to this, is Daniel, just making sure somebody's not zooming in or something. Would you like to present?
What? So this is an application for a planned development permit, a tentative subdivision map and a tree removal permit for property located at forty-four and fifty-six Sunnyside Avenue. So this is a two parcel sandwich of approximately seventeen thousand square feet on Sunnyside east of Winchester Boulevard in the planned development zoning district in the low medium density residential general plan land use district. Properties are currently developed with two single-family homes. The application for the planned development would allow for construction of six detached small lot, single-family dwellings. Each home would have three thousand square feet of living area and approximately four hundred square foot garage. The project would yield a density of twelve point eight units per gross acre, which is under the thirteen unit maximum for the general plan designation effective at the time, would result in the FAR one point two two, where there is no maximum. The project would be provided where with two parking spaces per unit in the garage. The tentative subdivision map would allow for creation of six private lots and then one common lot and a formation of a homeowners association. Then lastly, the tree removal permit would allow for removal two protected mulberry trees and retention of two redwood trees on the property. So a little background of this application, this is subject to an SB three thirty pre-app that was submitted on March third, two thousand twenty-three. That allowed the project to vest and lock in standards in effect at the time of that date. So therefore, neither the twenty forty general plan, the updated zoning code, nor the MFTD is applied to the project since those documents did not go into effect until the second. However, the project was still to achieve the same yield as required by the new general plan. Both the current general plan and the former would allow creation of up to six dwelling units on the project site. And then preliminary application was reviewed by the planning commission in a study session earlier this year in April. Here we have the site layout of project side looking north. So you would have two units on Sunnyside Avenue oriented to the street. Central drive aisle going down middle, that's twenty seven feet wide. That's just a little bit wider than the minimum necessary for fire department access. Then the units in the interior would orient towards that private roadway. Setbacks wise, the units at the front would have a two-foot setback that measured to the porch line with additional five feet of depth to the front of those buildings. The side setbacks along the outer perimeter would be ten feet. And then the rear setbacks at the units here up against the alley would be five feet. These lots would be about two thousand square feet each, as indicated in the table there, with widths of approximately forty-eight feet wide. This type of configuration is called a small lot by our zoning code for the reasons that they are by small lots under the typical six thousand square foot minimum that generally you could see with traditional single-family dwellings. In terms of design, had these are the two units of streetscape drawing looking at Sunnyside Avenue. These are three-story, thirty-six foot buildings. They would have front porches. The building materials are included vertical horizontal siding, you know, the gray color palettes. You have gable hipped and chipped roof forms and composite shingle roofing. There are no design standards that govern the design of these buildings. In terms of the true movement permits, most of the trees to be removed from the property fall under the twelve inch diameter threshold for protected trees. The exception are which are the two white mulberries that are proposed to be removed as far as the tree removal permit. And then the two redwood trees that would be retained within the backyards of the properties. So the two redwood trees are trees ten and nine. So these would be again in the rear yards of the new lots. The trees to the mulberry treats to be removed are one and three, and those would obstruct the placement of the and then again, the remainder of the trees, otherwise numbered in red, would all be removed. Our review considerations, as commissioned, where the review is limited by the Housing Accountability Act and the Housing Crisis Act, which limits the city's discretion and application of non-objective projects to it. The PD zoning district does not have any objective development standards or design standards applicable to this project. And it's also not subject to any area or neighborhood plan that would otherwise provide such standards. However, it is consistent, is required to be consistent with the general plan. So it would result in a density of twelve point eight units, which is within the range of six to thirteen of the designation as it existed at the time of the preliminary application. And lastly, in terms of CEQA review, staff does recommend that the commission find the project exempt from CEQA under the section fifteen three three two infill exemption. And also finding that that exemption is not precluded by an exception in that the start that in that the old home on forty-four Sunnyside Avenue is not a historical resource, which otherwise could present an exception to the exemption determination. As discussed during the study session, the applicant did procure an historic assessment that was peer reviewed by the city's historic architectural advisor. They determined that that house did not satisfy state, local or national criteria for being considered an historical resource. Therefore, it may be demolished without creating a significant impact under CEQA. In conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending that city council approve the planned development permit, tentative subdivision map and tree removal permit for this application. And then we do also have the application team on the line. Should you have any questions for them? And I'm open for any questions right now.
Okay, thank you for that very thorough presentation. Let's start at the size four.
Yeah, can you do me last?
Yeah, Daniel, just so I, I've asked this a few times, just trying to get it. So the so we have a two-foot front bit setback. We have the porch, but I typically when we, when we looked at setbacks, we looked, we always looked porch lines, that usually considered the actual setback or the?
Yeah, so the setback is basically portrait structure, otherwise exempted. So we do allow setbacks. So here that setback is to the column. That is a little closer than was seen at the study session. And the reason for that is that the public works department is requiring dedication of bike-to-the-land to allow for a sidewalk and park strip so that literally push the property line closer to the range.
Well, we've done that before and still had setback. Is this unusual, two feet? That's?
It is. In the past, we would just force him to provide more setback, but that's not an objective standard that we.
And 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 I know I asked you this before, but so technically zero, they could have zero setback. It'll be fine, so. And just my one other question would be, and I, and I, again, because things are kind of changing and I don't, now we have these trees that we're trying to protect. So we have that. And it's nice that they're saving those two redwoods and it's nice, I can see that one mulberry tree is right in the middle of the lot. So, you know, it's got to go. But the one, the mulberry tree number one, it's in the top, it's in the front corner. And just for curiosity's sake, in the past, before the recent changes, could we, would we typically with the C of Campbell typically have asked them to try to redesign the project slightly to save this mulberry tree, which is a protected tree and it's really on the corner of the lot?
Yes, in fact, that's actually what didn't happen with the redwood trees. So the redwood trees on this application were originally identified for removal. I mean, they did ask that they.
Okay. That mulberry is in the way.
Yeah, the distinction too is that, I mean, there is some level of quality assessments. Redwood trees are in much better condition, there was better species for retention. They're too long, which usually helps that they get preserved. The mulberry trees, based on applicants' arborist reports, are clearly in good condition, so.
Yeah, I did see the arborist report. It's not the world's greatest tree, but when we're, you know, when we're protecting the trees, we're trying to protect the trees, but I understand. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you fellow commissioners for bringing up the setback. To me, when we take property from the developer, that should be considered as part of setting, you know, I mean, if we property line was where it was and that two foot to zero foot, that's one thing. But here we've asked for five foot and then there's two for the main. So I view this as a seven foot setback number one. Number two, being a PD, you know, it has more, I guess, freedoms. My question is regarding the central aisle. You said it's larger than what it needed to be. So is twenty the minimum we provide for fire access?
This is because the buildings are three stories. They need aerial access. So it's actually twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six.
There were two-story homes, then you would only need twenty.
Okay, and then so the hundred fifty foot doesn't count anymore, the, you know, if the depth of the lot is less than hundred fifty?
It's under hundred fifty.
So.
They don't need a turn.
So, so they don't need that. Okay, got it.
Right in and back right out if that's.
Right. Okay, excellent. And then the other question I had is, do you know if so these are three stories, not two and a half, meaning that upper story doesn't have.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, those are basically, you know, I thought, I thought it was a pretty nice design, you know, I thought they put a lot of thought into it, so. All right, happy. So, thank you.
So I just, I I guess I wasn't listening close enough. Just, just to be clear on, on what the city asked for that ended up with the two-foot setback is what extra did we ask for and why?
Five feet of land. So that pushes the property line inward so that there can be a sidewalk and a park strip, as opposed to just a sidewalk.
Is that consistent with the rest of the street?
No, but this property is next to a commercial property, so Public Works wanted to kind of continue, continue that streetscape, at least through this property.
So, so in the, you know, I, I was at the preliminary application and so also at the, so at the preliminary application, there were neighbors who were concerned about stuff, right? Because it's three stories. Since then, has the design changed at all to accommodate the neighbors' concerns?
It is largely the same, though I think that project architect could speak to those specific changes more than I can.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay, questions I have for staff are, why was it PLN twenty twenty-three dash forty-three instead of dash one thirty-five at the study session? Is it a different application?
Yes.
Okay, is this situation here similar to item four today and that we can't make any conditions slip into that project?
No, it is a discretionary application, so. No, it is a discretionary application, so it cannot be denied without really violating the Housing Accountability Act. However, you can condition it in a manner that doesn't diminish its intensity or density. If you can root that condition in the findings or general plan policy. A little more leeway, but not that much.
Would this project be allowable under the MFDDS?
No, not this particular project, a six-unit project, yes. Six-unit project most likely would take the form of an apartment building, the multiplex mall under the MFDDS. It could take the form of a townhome project, but that likely would not be six units, that would likely be closer to four. That said, we are working on an update to the MFDDS to allow for this type of small lot, single-family subdivision. Because this type of project type isn't really recognized by the MFDDS. Thank you in advance for your
And on the trees, will there be replacement trees for the protected trees that are getting removed?
Yes. Thought that was part of the, I like the process. Okay, that's all I have here, let's open up the public hearing.
Commissioner Davis.
Oh, did I forget to, I am
You did, it's all right, thank you for
My only question first real quick, because I, yeah, just to Adam's question, Commissioner Bookbinder, I don't know if you answered this, Daniel, but there was a, there's a footnote in the staff report. The development of this property today would allow for six dwelling units, however, under the MFDDS, the project would have taken the form of an apartment building.
Already answered that, I missed that answer.
Exactly, that's basically, I just I just happened to have it in front of me, so I thought I
Is it right there? All right, thank you.
Just this is the second meeting in a row where we've had this sort of public work sidewalk requirement, I'm just like, how expensive is a sidewalk to install? And do we help people find, like, how does how does one build a sidewalk that complies with public work requirements?
I can't really speak to the cost, that's not really directly in my purview, but it is a common practice to require what is known as an exaction, where the city requires a certain type of off-site public improvement to be installed as part of the project. And that's consistent with the city's municipal code and general plan. So infrastructure is built out project by project in California largely due to the tax structure that makes it difficult for the city to finance mass infrastructure building. So if these projects get built, you see new sidewalks. Moving forward beyond this project, you also see projects that include new offsites by our retention facilities. There are new stormwater management requirements that require that these projects actually treat the stormwater that's in the public right of way, so they're getting just more complicated and unfortunately more expensive. It's simply a cost that's been built into these projects that is being passed along to the homeowners.
And we have, I assume we just have standards for the sidewalks, storm drains that they need to be guys, okay, that was helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Sure, so on that, Commissioner Fields, you know, as David correctly correctly said, this is a brand-new requirement to treat the water, the street water. Generally, you have to treat the water on-site. But starting September of this year, in California, you also have to treat the off-site water, street water. And so you cannot bring it to your site and treat it, have to treat it in the street. That's why they need extra strips behind the curb or something so that there's a place to treat the water, you know, and so it has really thrown development, you know, for loop until they figure out exactly how to do it. But for now, you just, as David said, you pushed the, Danny also said, sorry, you pushed the sidewalk back, create a park strip, and then do your treatment in the park.
May I just clarify that's, the park strip here is not treatment, it's really just more aesthetic except for connection to the commercial sidewalk next door. But that's because the pre-app also locked them in under the old stormwater requirements, so they aren't subject to the new requirements. It just happens to match up there. Okay, there's no other questions for staff, we'll open up the public hearing. Is the applicant online? The applicant likes to speak?
Yes, hi. Thank you, planning commission and Daniel. I appreciate all the hard work getting us to this point on this project. My name is Lance Cronell with SDG Architects, principal and project architect for this project. I think Daniel's done a great job of summarizing the projects and bringing us current to this point, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions to the applicant, you want to start over here?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so the question I think that our chair brought up was regarding any changes to the project as compared to the pre-application. I remember a neighbor had, you know, a question about shadow that this project would cast on them, you know, especially the morning shadow. Like, you know, I was a little perplexed because this project is to the west of the project that was making the comments, and so it couldn't
That's that's correct, yeah, I remember you catch, you caught that the first time.
Yeah, so, you know, have you guys done any additional shadow studies and?
As you as you rightly noted, the shadows don't really fall on their side based on the solar orientation of the two buildings. However, they did make a comment about our window placement, and we're open to making some adjustments to the window placement, and we'd be happy to look into that.
I did want to ask the applicant, were you aware of the multifamily development design standards? And was there a particular decision to use the existing standards as opposed to the new ones being proposed?
We didn't really know what was going to be proposed when we first set our application in motion. We feel comfortable with what we have with the with the rules and regulations that we were given at the time of our application, and we've designed it as such.
That absolutely makes sense, I just wanted to make sure that you had the chance to work with staff, given that they're reconsidering those standards, and if you're planning on developing more projects that you'd like to be involved with that, make sure that the things that you would like to do are in fact still plausible. I encourage you to get involved with staff.
Absolutely, I I enjoy anytime I get some time with Daniel, he's been fantastic throughout the entire process and helped guiding us through this entitlement path.
Excellent. I think that's all the questions we have, is there anybody else who would like to speak from the public? With that, I will post the public hearing. Start with discussion, start on this side.
Supportive of this, I think the new design looks great and appreciate the thoughtful answers from the applicant. And that they're compliant with the asks on sidewalks and other things that we require.
Yeah, yeah, definitely in favor of the project, it is a pretty nice design, it it, you know, it's it's a little too thin, maybe back in the old days, you know, this is such a neat area of Campbell, County Alice Avenue, two streets over. There are four, five, or six of the addresses are historic structures on Sunnyside, but this so this, you know, changes the character, I guess, of the street in some respects. It's right next to the commercial site, it's right at the end, I definitely buy the historic analysis that it's not historic, too many changes in that little building, so I guess there's a little bit of, kind of too bad, I guess, in the back of my mind, but I think the project's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I I concur with my colleague, I think this is, you've done a great job, given the other conditions you had to meet. I certainly appreciate the three-story development, because I think that's one way for us to be able to meet our Reno numbers, be able to comply with the Housing Accountability Act, and so I think you've done a great job of incorporating these, we certainly need the unit.
Yeah, I I actually disagree with a little bit with Commissioner Gray, actually, when I first saw that this was Sunnyside, it's like, well, kind of it is, that's the old south downtown, but if you walk Sunnyside is so much different than Alice, I mean, Sunnyside has multiple multiple unit developments on it, all the way up and down the street, including apartments and some duplex, fourplex, eightplex stuff. So it it has a very, you know, these, it is replacing a couple of nice little cottage houses, but if you really look at the street, it's already been flipped over to a lot of multi-unit ones, next to it, across the street from it, down the street from it. And then, of course, it's it's adjacent, it's it's a, it's it's, you know, a hundred feet from Winchester, so so I think it's perfectly, it's a perfectly good place to put these. I'm a little bit bothered by the short setback, and actually not with the, not with the developer, but with the city having this requirement of of having a, I'm not quite sure I understand the rationale of of a wider a wider walkway just just along that development, simply because there's a commercial next to it, so it seems to me that you're giving up a little, some setback for a little bit wider sidewalk for no real reason. I don't quite understand why it needs to be widened there if the rest of the street's the same, but but that's just to add for the record, that I would rather have, I would rather have gotten a little bit more setback than a little bit wider sidewalk that's just happens to be in front of these particular units. Otherwise, I think it's a, it's a great way to get some, and I think that I had asked in SARC about the ADUs, there's an option for ADUs, but that's something that they'll decide on their own as to whether or not they actually make those ADUs, and I guess that's acceptable, that's that's acceptable, we can't force that issue, but hopefully they'll they'll hopefully get in, maybe some of them will be ADUs, so that just adds to the, adds to the numbers, so I'm I'm all in favor of this project.
Thank you. The only notes I have are that it's excellent that there's a project which is actually using the prescribed density in the area, this is pretty much a stone's throw from one of our rail stations, so, you know, you should be able to fit more house in here. Pretty difty, these are, you know, pretty big houses, they're just taller, which allows you to fit a bunch of them onto say if two houses, you have six houses and they're not tiny, and they're, it looks like they'll they'll fit very well there, so I'm in favor of this, and someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll I'll move that Campbell Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending approval of a plant development permit, tentative subdivision map and detached and tree removal permit to allow construction of a six-lot detached single-family residential subdivision and related removal of on-site protected trees on property located at forty-four and fifty-six Sunnyside Avenue.
Second.
Second.
PLN twenty twenty-three, one thirty-five, I should note. Commissioner Fields? Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Congratulations, support, seeing it.
Now note that in the council report, we can bring up the sidewalk question, that could be a discussion point for the council. Is this a recommendation that goes to the council? This is recommendation, so the council will be considering it on January twenty-second. Pretty congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And which that brings us to item number six, which is hopefully it'll be pretty quick, I want to do a vibe check on the parking proposal. Got some pretty heavy pushback when I brought it before, so I've rewritten it, I made some shiny graphs. Have folks had a chance to hook that? I I guess I should structure this a bit more. Let's just do a round of, if anyone has notes, this is not, we're going to send this to staff, this is, I want to make sure that they're not going to put a whole bunch of time on something which is just in the wrong direction. So it's in packets starting on page two thirty-nine. Has anyone had a chance to review that? Stu, comments, start over here.
I mean, do you do you mind sort of describing your
Sure.
principles for how you revise these relative to the feedback?
Absolutely. Project the page two hundred forty. So I'll start introducing, so what I was told was ideally we should base this on what we've already granted. So I I cut this down to three uses. Offices, medical offices, and restaurants, and I did my best to shrink wrap our requirements based on what we've actually approved. I also have notes on the charts as to whether or not these were in walkable but non-AB twenty ninety-seven areas, AB twenty ninety-seven areas, or some other area. On each of the graphs, the blue bar is, so a taller bar means you get more floor space per parking. So a shorter bar means we require more parking, taller bar, less parking. So the blue bars are what is in the code currently, the red bar is what we have approved, gold bar is what we, what is being proposed by this change. I have also scaled back the suggestions, in this case, the office requirements have moved from one per two hundred twenty-five square feet to one per three hundred sixty-eight square feet, as you can see, this pretty much grabs the two applications we had in walkable non-AB twenty-nine seven areas, that's on page two four zero. Look on page two forty-one. There's the requirements for medical offices. This is the minimum that means that these four applications would not have required a discretionary permit, so it's one per two hundred fifty. Previously, I had proposed one per four hundred for offices, and one per three fifty for medical offices, this is considerably more parking for medical offices. And finally, for restaurants, I'm proposing one per two hundred square feet, now the current current standard is not per square foot, it's per seat, so you can see the blue bars are all over the place. But you can also see that with one exception, we pretty much grant the same amount, about one per two hundred square feet. The one outlier there is these is T treasures, it was a lot of discussion, and it's right next to Winchester, so I count it as an outlier, and I just kind of ignore it. The, now since this is a somewhat different approach, I note that other nearby jurisdictions, including Palo Alto, Los Gatos, and Opetis also use flat square footage for restaurant parking minimums, now they use anything from one per thirty-nine square feet to one per three hundred square feet, we would be not out of place among those with that change. Those are the the changes that I made to the proposal, so it's narrower in scope and less ambitious. I would like comments.
I did go to the city council meeting, oh, that is, I'm very tired. I did go to the city council meeting a week ago where I presented, Commissioner Cam cars and I work on the economic proposal, we talked about streamlining, and and I think what I heard from the council members is what particularly resonated was the idea that we were matching, you know, publicly discussed unanimously approved sort of things and like focusing on those, and we're not touching, you know, drive-throughs or massage, like the things that were controversial. So I appreciate your updates here, because I think it seems like it very much aligns with council's position on this of like, the stuff that we were always approving anyway, let's make that really easy for people. But not, you know, at this time, they weren't sort of indicating to go further than that. So with that all in mind, I think and thank you for taking the feedback and and doing that.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Gray?
I think this is good, I like I like the bars, it really made sense to me.
I think this is good. I like, I like the bars. It really made sense to me and I, I, so I'm going back to what you very, what your very first thing is, what you said about trying to get an idea before you did too much work into it. That was my idea last time we talked about getting some kind of sense from the city council whether or not they even want us to kind of work on this thing. Because we know that to 2097, if I get the number right, has taken away a lot of the big need for it. What we have here makes perfect sense to me. But I would like, you know, the sense of how we're going to do this as mayor of city council, we worked on this, how does this look? And also I think we should get, you know, staffs by and maybe we did, maybe we didn't. But, you know, staffs by and on the whole thing too, which I'm sure the city council would ask for anyway. But, but in terms of the, of what's presented, I think it makes perfect sense. You went back very scientifically to what we, what we've done. I don't know about, you know, I think the one space, 368 square feet, that's how it kind of worked out mathematically, but I think that's kind of an odd number. We could probably, we should round it off to something, I don't know, what, 375 maybe or even 38 or whatever. But anyway, but that's what I'm thinking. So I, you know, I don't know exactly how we're going on this, but before we do more work on it, I think we want to make sure that this is high enough on the priority list for the council that they even want us to get going on this at all. And then we kind of give them what we, what we got and then take it from there, I guess.
Thanks.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I really like the graphics. I think it, you know, pictures says a thousand words, I think, here it is. And, and to me, it shows that you're basically tweaking, you're not suggesting, you know, major changes. And I really like the way you've titled this thing, you start with the main points, non-residential. We're not trying to change, not trying to make the parking neighborhoods more difficult, you know. That's exactly the opposite. It's trying to just streamline our city. So, you know, there is better and more efficient user plan. You know, and again, in my opinion, it goes hand in hand with our streamlining because if you change one thing but don't change the corresponding thing, then you may not get the results that you're. So I think all around, these are great. I agree with Commissioner Gray that 368 is a little bit of an odd number. It should be a little bit more rounded, you know, but otherwise, you know, I like all the changes you've made.
Thank you.
Yeah, to be honest with you, it's like by the time I got to this, SARC and this, I was like, oh, what's this about? So I, I haven't really looked at it in depth. I think I kept what you're doing. I mean, I, 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 but by the time I got the appendix, I was going, well, what are all these items listed?
Oh, that's just like the raw data.
Maybe I, my first thought was, gee, if I could have seen this in a spreadsheet, maybe it would have looked better. But.
I do have a spreadsheet. I just represented this.
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, you know, my, my question on these kind of things is whether the samples, you know, are big enough. I, they're, you know, you've got five restaurants and, you know, that, I guess, I guess this goes back 10 years, right?
Yep.
So that's, that's a lot of years, but it's not very many items. But so, but yeah, I think you're on the right track. I think, again, I think I, I echo what some others have said in terms of whether or not, what Commissioner Gray said, but whether or not this is something that the, the council will want to deal with at this, at this point in time. And whether or not there's a way for us to get a better sense of that. And that we should have, you know, you know, the staff's input on it as well. So, but it's certainly, I think you, you made some improvements in terms of presenting the data. So I think that's good.
Thank you. Okay. I guess that's all the feedback. I did want to ask staff, is there a way to get a sense from city council if they like, think that the proposal is a dead letter and do not want to do any of this? Or if they'd be interested in hearing more?
So there is. So this, our department operations are governed by the city council's work plans for us. And that's codified in the budget. So to open up the budget, there's a color-coded document that indicates what we need to do. So for instance, this year's work plan, we need to work on the Hamilton Avenue precise plan, multimodal plan, updated MFDDS, Hamilton precise plan, many number of things. So typically, this type of process gets informed through the budget cycle. So I actually did check in with the city manager. So next year, the city manager will be seeking input from the boards, commissions on proposed work plan items. Basically, we'll go back to you some point in the spring, have some dialogue about potential updates, code changes that the commission would like to see. We'll transmit that to the council via the city manager's office. And then the council will need to lay all those priorities when it develops its work plan. And at that point, basically hand off the time to staff and then we kind of run with it. Very similar to what I've done with this, our preservation board, where we did have a subcommittee work for quite a long time on the Mills Act. And then that got to the council, the council says, good work. Let's now formally do this, add it to the work plan. And then that's something that I'll be doing. That, that general sequence is what would happen next year.
Okay. Is there anything that has to happen between now and then? Or is this like enough to go on?
I think this is probably enough to go on. Functionally, we just need to ensure you have support of the majority of the commission, which it seems that you do, to add that, add it to the list.
Okay, thank you. All right. So you guys don't have to hear about this until middle of next year. Thank you very much. Yes, certainly. Hope so. All right. That brings us to item seven, which is, I'd like to thank everybody for very efficiently running this meeting. I don't think I've ever been at one that has many items on it. The 2024 PC meeting schedule, we're viewing approved, proposed 2024 meeting schedule. There is a staff memo on page 249. I guess, does anyone have any notes or objections? Looks like pretty much the same schedule we had this year. It's second and fourth Tuesday and the second Tuesday in December. Do we need a motion?
I, yes, we two actually have two items rescheduled for January.
We need to prove the count?
I guess, just a voice vote.
Could we have a voice vote?
All in favor of approving for planning commission meeting encounter?
Aye. Okay, that concludes item seven. This is two eight, which is the election of the new chair and new vice chair. I'll miss you. So commission will elect the chair and vice chair for 2024. I believe there is a process for this and I, it's been a year since I've seen this happen. So I believe somebody else does nominations and then we vote on those nominations.
Could you both at the same time?
Yeah, we can.
You can.
Sure. I could just make, can I just make a nomination?
Sure.
But, yeah, before that, I would like to say, great job, Commissioner Bookbinder.
Thank you.
You've got passion, you've got a lot of interest in this stuff and you're really doing a good job. And really thank you, thank you for your work. I would like to nominate, keeping with our, with our tradition, we've got some fine people to step up. So I would like to nominate Commissioner Alan Scizor to be chairman for 2024 and Commissioner Matt Campcar to be vice chairman for 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
So a vote?
So all in favor, it's a voice vote.
Oh, thank you.
All in favor of voting, Commissioner Alan Scizor as chairman and Matt Campcar as vice chairman for 2024?
Aye. Congratulations. Right hand of the gavel now?
Oh, oh.
Oh. Do I get a plaque? Oh, I do get to take a gavel with me. Fabulous. Oh.
Okay, in honor of completion of your term as, as our chair of the planning commission for the 2023, we present you with this plaque, Commissioner Bookbinder.
Thank you. If I can pass the gavel to you. Thank you. Can I? Can I say like a few words of thanks or is it? Okay, yeah. Just thank you, everybody, for, for bearing with me. I realize it's been an incredibly busy year. I've been especially honored to work on the MFDDS and the general plan and the housing element. I realize getting all three of those in the same year is extraordinarily rare thing. And leading that effort, an even rarer thing. Thank you, everybody, for the late nights and the five-hour meetings and so forth. I really did some great work. I'd like to thank the people in the subcommittees who really stepped up and did extraordinary work. And, yeah, I'm very proud to have been part of this and I look forward to seeing what we'll do next year. Thank you very much. All right. And I guess, do you now just bring up item nine?
Yeah, I guess so. You can do that thing there.
There you go.
Okay, so, next item is appointment of SARC members. Apparently, I, as the chairperson, can appoint the SARC members. So, and of course, there's no obligation, it's my understanding, no obligation to accept the SARC position. But, but if, if willing to be a SARC member, I would like to appoint Vice Chair Campcar as the head of the SARC for this coming year. And, and going to the person who followed me to the commission since Commissioner Gray and Commissioner Strusky, who technically have more tenure, but they've already gone through that with SARC and, and being chairs, your next up, Commissioner Fields. And if you're willing to accept it as the second member of the SARC committee, then I would like to appoint both you and Commissioner Campcar to the SARC committee.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Yes.
So, that said, I officially appoint you on the SARC. Did you report of the community development director? Is there a report of the community development director?
Which is that the city council did review the planning commission's ad hoc, you know, economic development advisor subcommittee's recommendations at its last meeting and did provide direction to proceed. So Stephen will be working on the formal tax amendment for consideration by the commission and council early next year.
Sounds good. Well, with that said, thank you once again, Commissioner Bookbender, for your service in the last year. It's been great sitting next to you.
Thank you. Glad I'm going to be able to actually take notes.
Get to move somewhere else.
Yeah, I don't know where.
Am I going to be around the end? And with that said, I will adjourn to planning commission meeting of January, January 9th. I'm sorry. Adjourn to the planning commission meeting of January 9th at 7:30 PM. I adjourn this meeting.